I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, April 22, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website, in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman O'Brien will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
I'm here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Juddy.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
I'm here.
Fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Before I call on the mayor, I would like to recognize the passing of former Alderman-at-Large and former State Senator Barbara Presley by taking a moment of silence, please. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. I wanted to take this opportunity to address you regarding the Elm Street Middle School and potentially the housing project that could go there and by extension, the resolution on the agenda, R25158. So we've spent a number of years really considering what to do with Elm Street. We began during the pandemic by taking public input, I believe personally, but a lot of it was over the Internet via Zoom meetings because it was the pandemic, as to what the public would like to see in that location. And a number of things were considered, make it a park, turn it into a city building. But the overwhelming response by the public was that it should be converted to middle, mid-density housing, meaning not high-rise, not single-family homes, but something in the middle. And then to that end, with your authorization, we put out requests for proposals to solicit developers who could potentially convert the site into housing. And we received four different proposals. We appointed a committee consisting of city staff as well as three aldermen, I believe, who interviewed all four proposers and came down to two finalists, although I think there was a clear preference within the committee as to one of them. And then, a week ago Saturday and a week ago Thursday, last Thursday, a week ago last Saturday and a week ago last Thursday, I believe, those two developers, Penrose and LMG, made presentations to any members of the public who wished to attend. Those were upstairs in the third floor auditorium and we had, I think, really quite good attendance. Director Cummings was instrumental in putting all that together. And then, we, there was opportunity for questions and comments by members of the public. And in addition, there was a way to vote on the different proposals. In the back, there was a little ballot box and people voted. And they did express a clear preference for the same developer that the committee had preferred. Now, I think it's important that we proceed to develop this site for housing with one developer or the other. I need to find out your preference as to how you wish us to propose this to you. We could bring the preferred developer in and just make one presentation, or you could hear them both. That's really your preference, but I'm sure we could arrange either way. But the, over these years, we've discussed the KEIF Auditorium, which of course is part of the Elm Street Middle School, at length with the fire department and the building code people. And the message we've received very clearly is that we cannot just, we cannot develop the site for housing without dealing with the KEIF. And the reason is, is that once the change of use occurs and development starts, the KEIF Auditorium must be brought up to code. And that means a functioning heating system with a functioning sprinkler system, and it means new bathrooms because the, because the bathrooms that are currently used to conform with code are not those in the, in the, in the, in the front of the auditorium, but, but they're well within the school, down closer to the cafeteria. So those two things need to be accomplished. Once the change of use, well, if the KEIF is going to be used, if it's going to remain up, those two things need to be done or committed to when we begin the housing project. And without, and we cannot do the housing project without resolving the KEIF issue. So the only two ways to resolve it are to do those improvements and, and keep the KEIF operational, or to raise the KEIF and substitute green space or additional housing or something like that. But we cannot proceed with the, the housing unless, and just leave the KEIF as it is, or la mothball it or board it up or something like that. That is not permitted by these codes. And to that end, I think we, we do need to make a decision regarding the KEIF. Now, I know that there is differing opinions, both in the Board of Aldermen and in the public regarding what we should do. But my sense of it is, at least here, there is no clear consensus, should we, no clear consensus on how to proceed. Now, we have taken the time to meet in detail with Harvey Construction over the cost of what it would take to actually provide a functioning heating system as well as provide bathrooms. And we forwarded you, the Board of Aldermen, over the last few days, I think at the end of last week or over the weekend, a, an estimate, a detailed estimate, done by Harvey as to what that work would take. And the answer is $25 million. Now, we've been asked to see if the developers would, we don't know who the chosen developer is yet, but whether the developer or developer, whoever is chosen, would work with us to kind of do some kind of joint project. We've had some initial conversations. Keep in mind that Penrose, which is one of the two, would redevelop the building for housing, would use the building, at least that's their proposal now. And were that to occur, at least potentially, you could somehow do some kind of joint work with them. LMG proposes that the school be raised. They would do additional housing, but of course, if the school building is torn down, then there's not much you could do in terms of working with them. So far, the discussion suggests that they're really, Penrose is not that interested, and that's probably an understatement, in trying to do any kind of joint heating system or something like that. But we will continue those discussions to see if there's any way we could reduce this $25 million number. But if we can, it won't be significant. That's my thought on the matter. I mean, we'll see. So unless we resolve this question, we can't proceed with the housing. And as I said at the beginning, I think it's important that we do proceed with the housing because we've been working on this for years really. And if we delay, the cost of making the improvements to KEIF will only climb. I mean, the estimate is 10% a year or something like that. Construction costs, tariffs, all this are really taking their toll. Increases in construction costs are more than the cost of living. Now, if the Board of Aldermen was prepared immediately or in the, in the next few months to make a decision to spend $25 million or to raise the KEIF, great. But somehow, I don't think that's really in the making. So what I've proposed is to put the question on the ballot in November and let the voters decide whether they wish to keep this historic building at a considerable cost or whether they think they'd prefer that we save the money. There is precedent for this. We went to the voters when the issue of the, what is now the Nashua Center for the Arts was being considered in the early days. There was a refer, an advisory, and this would be an advisory question, not a binding vote, but there was an advisory question that was done at that time, that was put on the ballot at that time. And that is the mechanism we could use again to try to get community sentiment on a pretty tricky, pretty tricky project with a historic building. I mean, a little bit more, I mean, there had been talk by some of the people in the community who had, were advocating keeping the KEIF, that they would raise, begin raising money, and the number was $10 million. Well, nothing, no one has done anything on that. I mean, no one has followed through on any of that and no one's even talking about that any further, at least that I've heard. So I think it's really up to the city to decide whether, you know, we wish to proceed. Now, I know, I mean, I'm not suggesting we vote on this now or next week or anything like that, but I think we should proceed with the presentations to you so that, or the presentation, however you wish to proceed, so you can see what, what, what is being proposed and the details of it. I think the proposals are good. I mean, you will like them, I believe, and maybe both of them. But again, I, as I, as I said, there was one that's preferred for various reasons. And you may agree with the committee and the, and the members of the public that that is the way, that is the direction in which we should go. So again, we don't need, I'm not suggesting we vote tonight, but I'm suggesting that we should give this to the voters, help us make the decision and just be bound by whatever their, their thinking is. We have been recognized as a housing champion in the state of New Hampshire by, by the state of New Hampshire. There are 15 or 20 communities, meaning we've done a lot to promote affordable housing. Although I noticed the House budget, there were grants available to the housing champions. That's been deleted from the state budget, at least in the House budget. So although we were eligible for some help with some of these projects, we, that may not be available anymore, depending on what happens up in Concord. Now, on some less weighty items, Madam President, Pete the Cat did a, was, was hired by Nashville Community Arts, which is the organization that raises money around the Performing Arts Center. They were hired to do two, two performances for all of the second graders in Nashua. This was, I think, last week. It was a very, I went to one of the performances, it was very funny, and the second graders loved it. So what they did is they, the school department bused in half the second graders at like nine or something like that, and another one at, and the, the other half of the second graders at 11. And the, it was a great, I mean, everybody had a good time and it was a really nice thing that was done. I also wanted to mention, Madam President, that Stellows has now been officially opened in the sense that there have been games on the field, which of course, thank you for authorizing the funds for that, for the restoration of the field after it failed the test, which you're all very well aware of. Another item is that the, there is an Arbor Day celebration Friday. This is done every year and we plant a tree at one of the elementary schools to celebrate Arbor Day. Our Parks Department and Eversource are involved with that. That is 9:30 at the Charlotte Avenue School Friday morning, if you wish to come to that. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to join you in wishing condolences to the family of Barbara Presley, who served here on the Board of Aldermen as an Alderman-at-Large for a number of years on two different occasions, separated by a number of years. She was one of the early women actually elected to the Board of Aldermen, especially in the at-large positions. She also was in the state senate and was instrumental in getting enacted the way, the mechanism by which we fund the conservation fund. So what, what happens now is that when a property is in, in current use, but then is proposed for development, current use enables the owner of the property to pay a far reduced tax. But when they develop it, they have to retroact, pay back all the taxes that they saved over the years that it was in current use. And under Barbara's legislation at both the state level and then here at the city, we retain those extra current use taxes that are paid upon development for deposit into the conservation fund, which is what the, our Conservation Commission uses and recommends to buy various conservation lands. And there's still, I think, a couple of million dollars in there. Some of those funds, for example, were used to buy the agricultural easement, to help buy the agricultural easement on the Sullivan Farm. Anyway, Barbara was a very significant member of the community and she did pass away recently and her wake is, I believe, Friday night. And that's all I have, Madam President.
All set to the remarks of Mayor. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to thank the mayor for bringing forward the ballot measure for the KEIF Auditorium. However, it's premature, and I say this because, for a number of reasons. One is that while the committee has seen and, and reviewed the proposals, this board has not been able to have a meeting as a board with those two developers to determine and ask questions about the proposed developments. I know for a fact that myself, as well as others that I have talked to, have some concerns and some questions in regards to some of the funding elements related to the proposals, as well as just some of the aesthetics and some of the mechanics behind how some of the development is going to take place. So I don't, while I appreciate the fact that we are close to having what would seem to be a final product, we might not be there. And this board may not want to just take whatever is given to us. So that's number one. And number two, in regards to the KEIF Auditorium, it is very frustrating to me, as an Alderman, because we made it very clear in that RFP that we wanted the KEIF Auditorium to be a part of the community going forward. Furthermore, the, we also passed legislation to create a KEIF Auditorium Commission, which that commission would, is charged with figuring out how to leverage outside interests in getting that theater up to code. And we haven't appointed anybody. I see that there's somebody being appointed to it tonight, which I think is a good first step. But this has been out there for months. And so to come at the last minute and give an unrealistic number, which $25 million to me, having not done the proper steps yet, is an unrealistic number to propose to the public to say, do you want to spend $25 million on this? Well, we don't know that it's going to cost $25 million. We know that that's the estimate, but we don't have a committee of people working to see if they can whittle down the cost. We have not been able to ask either developer whether or not they can go back to the drawing board and do a shared mechanical proposal with that theater. These are some of the questions that this board has not been able to ask. And I don't think that it's incumbent upon us to go and rubber stamp whatever is put in front of us. So I think there's still a lot of community engagement. I think there's still a lot of ways to go. And I have no problem with putting that question to the voters of whether or not they want to keep the KEIF Auditorium, but I think it has to be an honest and fair question. And right now, it's not an honest and fair question because we haven't done our due diligence yet. So I'm gonna, I'm going to say that I hope that my colleagues, when this gets to the committee, that, you know, that we table this until we can, we can get the answers that we deserve.
Alderman Senate.
Can I, I don't disagree. I mean, I don't think you should vote before you hear these presentations. I mean, you should have a full picture, but I just wanted to put the question before you so you'd have it in front of you when you, when you hear and meet with these developers.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I share a lot of the same concerns that my colleague at large just articulated. For myself personally, I know there was, from the mayor's remarks, you know, a couple of ideas or avenues that we could pursue in terms of hearing these proposals. For me personally, I'd prefer to have both, both developers in front of us to present their proposals. I've, I've had the opportunity to review the presentations that we've given to the public, but I, I think this board would be doing the best work if we had the opportunity to have them in front of us as a full board and to, to engage them in a bit of question and answer and discussion in this setting versus the, versus the setting that the, the public presentations were presented in. So I, I hope that we'll get them in front of us and I hope that, like my colleague just articulated, we can have a, a longer conversation before we make a hasty decision. And just following that, I'd like to echo the condolences to Barbara Presley's family. Since I've known Barbara, she's been a resident of Ward Seven, lived over on Orchard Avenue and used to see her and get to spend a good amount of time with her every, every time we'd vote, every time she'd come into the polls. She was always very pleasant to speak to. I could never convince her to get back on the radio with George Russell after she stopped doing that, because that's where I first really got to know her voice before connecting with her on a personal level. So she's definitely done a lot for the community and she will be missed. Thank you.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo the sentiments of my, of the, my two colleagues that spoke before me. I did go to one of the presentations and saw, actually saw both the presentations. I went on Saturday and I, from what I heard, just the public that was there and sometimes just a certain group of people tend to come to these things because they, they do have a particular interest. The KEIF was an excitement for them. Now, if I turned around and said to them, okay, you can keep it, but it's going to cost $25 million, would they in fact have said yes? I don't know that, probably not. But I can say that one of the, the presenters very vehemently kind of was like, you know, I'm not going to, to hook up the, the KEIF. But if it was put to them, you have a better chance of getting this job if you're willing to do this, would they? And I think we as a body deserve to ask that question and I too would like to see both of them come here. Both of them are phenomenal presentations. Anybody who hasn't seen them, I suggest you watch both, the Thursday and the Saturday. They were really great presentations, a lot of good questions from the public that came up. And I, I think that we, we should, we should move forward having both of them come here. But I also think, as my colleague had pointed out, we deserve the right to ask them the question, you know, would you be willing to compromise? Would you be willing to take on some of this cost? Would you be willing to, et cetera? So their answer may be no, but unless we ask, we don't know. That was why we put the KEIF into this RFP to begin with, just to kind of get the ideas. And I, I think that it should go on the ballot, if that's the way it should go. I'm not against that. I just think that we, as my colleague pointed out, have all of the information out there, not just a $25 million price tag that's going to shock anybody who would obviously vote no for it. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
I agree with a lot of what was said by my colleagues, but the one piece of data that I find missing in this is, what is the cost of tearing down the KEIF? That could be extensive and so we may be having, looking at a question of what's the delta versus the $25 million, because it's, if, if we're not spending the $25 million or something less than that to restore the KEIF, what's it going to cost us to tear it down? It's got to be substantial dollars and I don't know if anybody's done an estimate yet on what that cost would be.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. Quickly, I would like to hear from both developers. I've looked through the plans extensively. I know that the committee's doing great work, but I agree with many of my colleagues previous, that there's a lot of digging in and questions that I'm sure the full body would like to put to them. I also wanted to offer my condolences. Barbara Presley was one of the first people to interview me ever, and I got to go into WS and Men eight years ago and sit with her. It was really quite interesting. So she will be missed. And then I just had a point of clarification. The mayor mentioned the Housing Champion monies. My understanding is that the 2026 money has been taken out of the budget, but we are going to take action this evening on the $828,000 that we received for this budget year. And so that'll be coming up later.
Yes, I'm talking about, I didn't make that clear. Yes, this would be in future fiscal years, the money would be eliminated.
All set? Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think my colleague at large has said it very well, there's a lot of unanswered questions here. And I think another part of this is where this has fallen to our five-year bonding plan, where we said we want to spend 25, $25 million per year. We heard about this project, but yet none of us put it into that bonding plan. So we're going to have to, you can't do everything. And I think that's also the conversation that has to have here is, all right, so if we do end up going forward with the KEIF, what else on that plan that we all ranked was more important are we cutting? So I think there's just a lot of conversations we have to have here. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So it's all been said, but with regards to the KEIF Auditorium, if people who are watching or members of this board want to kind of see what we would be talking about, The Actors Singers are holding a production of Legally Blonde. It's a musical, May 2nd to, I think, 5th. So you can go see. And I think it's important to kind of check into that because a lot of people haven't been to the KEIF in a while, haven't, you know, experienced it. And if, if we do put this before the voters, the voters are ultimately going to decide, but I do think it's, it behooves us all to know what we're, what we're risking.
Recognition period.
None.
Discussions or presentations? Discussions of presentations?
Fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvements Program CIP report.
I'm going to recognize Planning Manager Sam Durfee.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Sam Durfee. I have the pleasure of managing the planning department here at the city. I'm here before you this evening just to give a broad update to the CIP process, chiefly because we updated our process this year. As you may recall, in past years, the document consisted of rankings that were alphabetical, followed by a number. We received feedback that the ranking system was not entirely helpful, somewhat vague, a little confusing. So we took that feedback and we altered the system in which we would evaluate the projects. So we sat with the committee, our alderman and representatives as well. And we talked about establishing a truly data-driven approach to evaluating and scoring projects. So these projects all are now ranked on a scale of one to five. They're scored one to five across seven different criteria. Those are project urgency, which is really related to any legal requirements or immediate safety concerns. Project readiness, has it been planning, are there estimates, things like that? We looked at economic, environmental, and social impacts, and also interdependencies, how different capital projects play off of each other, any planning that needs to be associated with that. And then, of course, ongoing maintenance and operation costs. These seven criteria were then weighted. Urgency and readiness heavily weighted, where the criteria at the end of that list were weighted less so. That way, we had developed a consistent and fair approach to scoring. We removed the subjectivity as much as we could from the ranking process. So the document that you now all have, I believe, passed around digitally to you all, now has a comprehensive list scaled one to five for all 125 capital projects that were assessed by the Capital Improvements Committee. And I'm happy to take any questions about it, but I just wanted to ride that update because of the relatively substantial change just in our process.
Any questions? Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I just want to say that Alderman Sullivan and I were involved in the process. And it was a lot more work. But I'm sure the rankings are a lot more backed up by substantial data and analysis than it's ever been before. And I think it provides a lot of information on how these were ranked and how they ended up in the list that they were. It's not perfect yet, as I'm sure Alderman Sullivan would concur. There's a few changes we can make for next year. But it... Because like the enterprise funds are in there as well. And that sort of convolutes things because they're basically funded a different way. So... And there are also projects in there that are substantially less than $1 million, which are perhaps cash projects. So you have to look at the ranking for the importance and then the funding as to how it might be taken care of. So... But a lot went into it. And it was an interesting and a way of looking at this versus the old way.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of April 8, 2025. If accepted, place it on file and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Sam Durfee, AICP Planning Manager, regarding positive recommendation from the Nashua City Planning Board to the Board of Aldermen regarding the FY 2026 Capital Improvements Program CIP report.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have two speakers signed up. Matt Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, for the record, Matt Sullivan, Community Development Director. I'm here this evening to speak briefly on R25-148, which is on your agenda for this evening for first reading and potentially second reading in front of the board as well. And I want to quickly talk about that and provide some background to this resolution in the context of the mayor's comments around the Housing Champion program. The legislation itself contemplates the acceptance of a grant from the Bureau of Economic Affairs, the State's Bureau of Economic Affairs, in the amount of $828,000 as part of the municipal housing production grant through the Housing Champion status process. To tell you a little bit about why we're receiving these funds, as many of you may be aware, we were one of 18 communities that was awarded a Housing Champion status at the end of 2024, in December of 2024. There was really a recognition of the municipality's efforts from both a regulatory perspective and a housing supply perspective to address the housing crisis across the state of New Hampshire. And so we received that designation. And shortly thereafter, the state of New Hampshire actually reduced this housing production grant. And frankly, at the time, it was a bit uncertain what exactly the parameters of the grant were, what was necessary to apply for the monies, and how the monies had to be used. But in fact, grant monies were available as direct grants to municipalities for their... For those municipalities that had created housing units affordable to 60% or for households making 60% or less of the area meeting income. So essentially, if a municipality had permitted over the prior year units that were affordable to that income band, they could apply for this funding. So Manager Durfee and myself, I want to thank both for his efforts to actually secure the Housing Champion designation and secure this grant, put our minds together and submitted a grant application to the program. Some time went by. We weren't exactly certain what was going to happen. But just last Tuesday or Wednesday, we received notification from the Bureau of Economic Affairs or Business and Economic Affairs that we were receiving an $828,000 grant. So we're thrilled to have that before you this evening. The catch, as is often the case with these state grants, is that we have a very short timeline. We've been asked to accept the monies over a period of 10 days. We prepared legislation. The legal team was critical in getting that in for us. So I want to thank Corporation Council. But we're asking for your support this evening to accept these funds. The one piece that I wanted to speak to specifically is that we're asking to direct these monies into the city's Housing Revolving Fund, formerly the Housing Trust Fund. It's our request that if the grant be accepted, the monies move directly into that fund and, of course, deployed for the customary reasons defined within the Housing Revolving Fund's purpose, which is really the creation of affordable housing or housing planning work around... Or housing planning work within the community. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm happy to answer questions, of course, as part of your consideration of the legislation. But we are hopeful for first and second reading to accept this grant and begin deploying these monies into the creation of affordable housing across the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Thibom?
Okay, my name is Fred Thibom, 24 Cheyenne Drive. I'm going to refer to the item on the agenda, which is communication requiring final approval in a contained proxy card. Looks like this. On this proxy card for the appointment of the Board of Directors members Class A, there are five directors with outstanding resumes. I won't go over that. I have no time. But you can look at it in the proxy statement. And then it lists Lori Wilshire. Lori Wilshire without a resume. Lori Wilshire without any experience. Not even sure if she has a degree. Lori Wilshire has no participation in the merger activities that took place in 2011. I should know. I'm very active in that. According to page three of the proxy statement, Lori Wilshire was appointed to Penachuk Board of Directors as of 1 March. What happened to the conflict of interest prohibition in the original Penachuk 2013 bylaws? Their concern about the merger, conflict of interest? I found, doing some checking, that the bylaws had changed under pressure from Attorney Bolton. You can look at 25 February for the volume minutes. The bylaws revised 1 March state the mayor will appoint a director and the person of the board will appoint a director. But no such allowance is made in the PUC order, which says the Board of Aldermen shall appoint a director, not the person of the board. Certainly not her appointing herself. Furthermore, if appointed, Lori Wilshire will receive a retain of $12,000 a year. Now, what we got here, ladies and gentlemen, is a violation of at least two National Conduct Regulations. I don't have time to go through it, 40 minutes remaining. But I'll suggest you look at paragraph 596 of the NROs, which says, "No Board of Aldermen member shall receive any compensation in a manner of which the board has authority." NRO 5101, no appointment by any municipal board or its members to any office of position under supervision. So Wilshire cannot serve in the Board of Penachuk, which the Board of Aldermen supervises. Two violations. I recommend you vote against her appointment. This is on this proxy card. I ask...
Your time is up.
That you nominate someone who has a management and experience. And if you don't appoint her, I will put her before the Conduct Committee and ask that she... Her position be terminated.
Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from John J. Boziver, Chief Executive Officer and Chief Engineer, regarding notice of annual meeting of sole shareholder in proxy statement, proxy card, and annual report to the sole shareholder.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the sole shareholder of Penachuk Corporation consent to the election of C. George Bauer, Amy Marie Carivo, Brian H. Law, J. N. Lustig, and John D. McGrath to the Penachuk Corporation Board of Directors as Class A directors, each for a three-year term, and until their successors are elected and qualified and to authorize the mayor to transmit by proxy card the vote of the sole shareholders to the Board of Directors of Penachuk Corporation. And I would like this by roll call.
You've heard the motion. It's different than what was on the script. I have already been appointed as a director. I've been seated as a director. I have management experience of 32 years. I'll open it up. Questions? Discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Among all the other points that were raised, I would say I don't need to see your resume. I've worked with you for 10 years and I've seen your accomplishments. So I think it's as visible a resume as you can get in the city.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. So to what you brought up earlier about changing the script, that your name was removed, you said that you've already been appointed, so that's why we've deleted your name from that language?
That's... That's correct. Anyone else? Alderman Cleve?
Thank you, Madam President. And I don't know if this is not okay to say, but I just wanted to add that one of the reasons why, when this first came up at the beginning and your name was put forward, I was in complete agreement with your name being put forward as you were one of the only members here on the board who had been part of that original transaction and so on. And I felt that you did have the knowledge of what that board was supposed to be doing and so on. And I felt that you were extremely qualified, and I spoke to it at that time. I still continue that way. And I would stand up against anybody else who said differently. So thank you.
Anyone else? Saying none, would Clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Gavell?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Cleve?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
Joint convention with Board of Library Trustees.
There being no objection, I will declare that the Board of Aldermen meet in joint convention with the Board of Library Trustees for the purpose of electing two trustees and call for a nomination.
Hello there, Linda Laflambeau. I am the Chair of the Nashua Public Library Board of Trustees. And I would like to place two names in nomination. The first is Manuel Espizia. That would be for a seven-year term ending in 2032. And secondly, John Kennedy, who will be filling the remaining six years of a seven-year term that ends in 2031. Together, they bring continuity and a breath of fresh air for the board. Manny? There's Manny. I think a lot of you know and probably remember him from coming up here and doing the library's presentation to the Mayoral Board of Aldermen Ad-Hoc Committee on Capital Expenditures and Debt Service Plan. He is also a former state representative for Ward Four. He's a Public Works Commissioner. He's an awesome trustee, and I think he very much deserves a second term. Mr. Kennedy? He's right here. He is a library patron, the father of two little library patrons, who all take advantage of our programming, very enthusiastic. He's been in Nashua for 10 years, in New Hampshire all his life. And he would very much like to give back to his community. He is currently the Deputy Chief of the Criminal Division for the U.S. Attorney's Office in Concord. So he knows a thing or two about public service. And if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I know there was concern about the process before. And I assure you, Mr. Kennedy has attended a meeting of the library trustees. The public has had ample opportunity to contact us about what they may or may not have heard. We have received no concerns.
Thank you. There being no objection, I will close the nominations. Would Clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Manuel Espidia and John Kennedy.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Manny Espidia and John Kennedy.
Alderman Moran?
Manny Espidia and John Kennedy.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Espidia and Kennedy.
Alderman Gavell?
Espidia and Kennedy.
Alderman Lopez?
Manuel Espidia and John Kennedy.
Alderman Sullivan?
Mr. Espidia and Mr. Kennedy.
Alderman Clemmons?
Manny Espidia and John Kennedy.
Alderman Senate?
Manny Espidia and John Kennedy.
Alderman Jettie?
Manuel Espidia and John Kennedy.
Alderman Thibodeau?
John Kennedy and Manny Espidia.
Alderman Cleve?
Manuel Espidia and John Kennedy.
Alderman Dowd?
Manuel Espidia and John Kennedy.
Alderman Kelly? Alderwoman Kelly?
Manny Espidia and John Kennedy.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Manny Espidia and John Kennedy.
Trustee Manuel Espidia?
Manuel Espidia and John Kennedy.
Trustee Scott Queef?
Manny Espidia and John Kennedy.
Trustee Kristen Kane?
Manny Espidia and John Kennedy.
Trustee Padmaja Kuna Paridi?
Manuel Espidia and John Kennedy.
Trustee Linda Laflambeau?
Manny Espidia and John Kennedy.
Trustee David Pinsonald? And Mayor Jim Donches?
Manny Espidia and John Kennedy.
21 for Manuel Espidia and John Kennedy.
And that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Would the two gentlemen come forward to take the oath of office, please? Over here, right in front of the attorney.
It's been seven years.
Raise your right hands, please. Do each of you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a trustee of the Nashua Public Library according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws... and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help you God. Congratulations.
Keefe Auditorium, Alicia Gregg, new appointment, term to expire May 13th, 2028, for Eastbrook Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee, Natalie Overcash-Lucey, new appointment, term to expire June 13th, 2028, 74 Weathersford Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Andrew Lucy, new appointment, term to expire May 13th, 2028, 74 Weathersford Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor's red and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 8th Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 2nd, 2025 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 9th, 2025 Penachuk Water Special Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 7th, 2025 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Human Affairs Committee meeting held Monday, April 21st, regarding proposed resolution R-25142. Would recognize Alderman Lopez.
So as was brought up in public comment, at our meeting yesterday, Director Sullivan did present to us the likelihood of tonight's ordinance resolution and then the need for a second reading to accept $800,000-plus into our Housing Trust Fund. As mentioned, these funds are because Nashua has shown leadership and is identified as a housing champion by the State of New Hampshire. We additionally also went over the Health, the Community Health Infrastructure Grant, which is also on tonight's agenda and will likely need a second reading as well. Those are funds that were previously identified last year. We would need to accept them in order to implement them. They provide training and support for many of our existing positions and primarily for one full-time position.
Thank you. Confirmation of may's appointments?
Arts Commission.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointment of Faith Mandravellis, 228 Whitney Ave, Manchester, with a term to expire April 27th, 2028, to the Arts Commission. Is Faith here this evening? Please come forward for the oath of office. And while you're coming up, thank you for your willingness to serve.
All the way up?
All the way up.
Did you want your friend to be here? Your dad, yes.
Sure. Right here.
I can take her. Her dad just. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Nashua Arts Commission, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Registars.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of William M. Grady, 14 Tinker Road, Nashua, with a term to expire May 1st, 2028, to the Board of Registars. Is Mr. Grady here this evening? Please come forward for the oath of office.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Board of Registars of the City of Nashua, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cultural Connections Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Sandra Pratt, 254 Lake Street, Nashua, with a term to expire March 1st, 2028, and the new appointment of Marina Vaz, 1 Clark Tower Place, Apartment 411, Nashua, with a term to expire April 22nd, 2028, to the Cultural Connections Committee. Sandra and Marina here this evening?
No.
No. Okay, they will be sworn in at a later date.
Planning Board.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Robert Bollinger, 1 White Oak Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire March 31st, 2028, and reappointment from member to alternate, Scott Leclair, 10 Day Lily Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire April 22nd, 2028, to the Planning Board. Robert and Scott, either of them here this evening? Okay, they will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-25-139 relative to the rescinding of authorized unissued debt.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25139.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 25139 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-141 relative to the transfer of $200,000 from Department 152 Fire Rescue Account 51, salaries and wages to Department 198, inter-fund transfers account 89732, transfer to Fire Emergency Expendable Trust Fund.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-141.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 25141 is declared duly adopted.
I'd like to make the motion to suspend the rules and allow for a second reading of R-25142, and I'd like to speak briefly on it.
Alderman Lopez.
As I mentioned in my oral report, this is an amendment to the scope of services for the Public Health Infrastructure Grant. It is something that they had initially presented to us last year, and it provides, I mentioned that it provides support and training for a specific member, but it also provides software that's used in community, for community health workers.
The motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of R-25-142 relative to the amendment of the scope of services of the Public Health Infrastructure Grant.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 25142 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-25-146 amended, providing information on the tax bill about property revaluations and providing for future notifications of upcoming citywide evaluations.
Alderman Jettie.
I move to amend O-25-046 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, and I'd like to speak on that.
Alderman Jettie.
So this, the original proposed ordinance, the original version, amends NRO Section 5-113, Real Estate Taxes, by adding in Section 1, a Paragraph B, which provides that each municipal tax bill shall contain the following language. And it provides, that the language is, New Hampshire RSA 75:8-A, provides that the assessors shall reappraise all real estate within the municipality so that the assessments are at a full and true value at least as often as every fifth year. Due to volatility, the city is planning to do a property revaluation every two years. The current plan is that a revaluation will occur each even-numbered year. So the, so the committee discussed this, and the committee approved making this change. But the original version also included a Section 2, which amends NRO 5-40, Paragraph F, by adding the language, "Beginning in 2026, the city shall provide owners of record with notice of any citywide revaluation per RSA 75:8-A by U.S. Postal Mail on or before April 15th of any revaluation year. Said notice shall provide a phone number for questions to be answered." So the committee discussed this, and the fiscal note attached to it estimates that the cost of providing this, this extra notice would be between $25,000 and $50,000. So the committee thought that this was an unnecessary expense, just to provide an additional notice of an upcoming reevaluation, where Section 1 already provides notice twice a year. So the notice is, is part of your tax bill. It's on the print, it would be printed on the tax bill. There'd be no additional expense to sending it out, since it goes with the tax bill. And you would receive it with your December tax bill, and you'd receive it with your July tax bill. So the next reevaluation would be not this year, but in 2026, the even, the next even year. So before that reevaluation takes place, you will receive a notice this July and the coming, incoming December, and then you'll get another notice next July that, that the reevaluation is occurring. So this notice would not, this additional notice that provided for in Section 2 would not provide any additional notice of a change in the actual number that your, you know, what your actual number of your new reassessment might be. It's just a notice that a revaluation is going to happen that year. This notice would come on or before April 15th of the revaluation year, in addition to the December and July notice. So, you know, the committee thought that, that this would be unnecessary, and I would like to add, what is, I think what is more valuable to the public would be a notice of the actual change in the assessment, you know, which this, this notice is just telling you that there's a revaluation happening. It doesn't tell you what the number is. And I think under our current process, when, when the company doing the reappraisal or the reevaluation, you know, determines a number, that's, that's mailed out to us prior to the tax bill. But there is also pending in the state legislature currently, Senate Bill 225, which has passed the Senate and is now pending in the House, which would require a notice of a change in the assessed value at least 45 days before the final bill, which is the December bill. So, you know, I expect that, I mean, it was passed by the Senate, I expect the House will pass it as well. So if that becomes law, you know, that is already going to require a, a notice of the new assessment 45 days before the December bill. So, you know, that's another reason that this Section 2, I think, is unnecessary, and I think it accomplishes, you know, what the sponsors of the ordinance, you know, especially Alderman Govea, intended, and that is to, you know, correct the situation that we ran into last time, where we were doing a revaluation, and, and after, you know, the company that did it, Vision Government Solutions, after they did their work, you know, all of a sudden we got a notice as to what, what the new number was. And, and I think the purpose of proposing this was to make sure that people knew that there's a revaluation occurring. The committee felt that that would be accomplished by adding this language to the tax bill without the extra expense of this additional notice. So I would, you know, so that it, it, so the committee amended it, recommended that we amend it by eliminating Section 2, which, which is what the Goldenrod copy does. And I ask that you support the committee in this. Thank you.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today in opposition of the Goldenrod copy, and while I do understand why there is hesitation by members of the committee to want to make sure we tighten the purse strings and aren't spending where we don't have to. It was mentioned that SB 225 earlier, and that does address some of the issue, if passed and obviously signed in. But what that would do is, we would have to put it in the newspaper, which I think this chamber has argued how effective that really is. We would have to post it on our website, which I think is good. That's a good step in the right direction. Social media, and in two places where we would post, like where we post our, our announcements and meetings. Okay, that's good steps in the right direction. What, what I was looking to do was get it direct to the property owner. And although, don't get me wrong, having it on the back of the tax bill, this was a two-pronged approach legislation that involved the back of the tax bill and this postcard mailer. So, worse comes the worst, it still seems like it will go on the, on the back of the tax bill. So I went home the other night in preparation of this meeting and looked at the back of my tax bill. Currently, we have 300-plus words, 44 lines of text, eight bullet points, four sub-points, two addresses, two phone numbers, and seven underlying points of text. There is a lot on the back of a tax bill. So when I'm looking at this, I go, great, it will be on the back of the tax bill. And sure, if a constituent comes up and complains, I can go, yes, it is on the back of your tax bill. You should pay attention. There's a lot of good information on the back of your tax bill. I would suggest everybody looks at it. There's a lot of stuff on there I didn't even know was on the back of the tax bill. I figured out it was on the back of the tax bill. What this would do would give that owner a one-on-one city, city seal mailer in their mailbox saying, "We have a reevaluation coming up." And when they end up going through and they put those numbers in, we do get a mailer that says it went up. This would at least give you a little bit more preparation. We're talking $25,000 to $50,000 every two years, and that would be added on to a contract that's already costing us $400,000-plus with Vision. So this is a smaller amount of money at the end of the day. And to bring public awareness and to make this process even more transparent than what it is, and really have no excuse of anybody to say we shouldn't, or have any excuse of anybody saying they didn't know, well, the fault's on them at that point. If this passes as, or if this passes as originally drafted, and then with SB 225, this issue's put to bed in my mind. Right now, with everything already on the back of the ballot, or on the back of the tax bill, excuse me, I feel there's just way too much information, and this will just get lost in the sea of 300-plus words and 44 lines of text. So therefore, I do ask the, my colleagues in the chamber to please vote down the Goldenrod copy and pass the original version. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I was the, that committee, I think I was the lone dissenting vote against this amendment, and I intend to stick to those guns tonight. If the amendment goes through, I'll certainly vote in favor of the amended version, because I think something is better than nothing. But the way I look at this is, sort of what Alderman Govea had alluded to, is we're essentially adding a statement of procedure to the back of the tax bill. Look, I'm probably the laziest taxpayer in the city of Nashua. Okay, I got a separate account where my taxes come out of, so I look at it, I go, oh, that bites, and then I file it away. I certainly don't sit down for a little light reading at night at the back of my tax bill. And I know anybody who operates like me is going to miss that. I think the stopgap comes when we mail out the postcard, and we asked enough questions at the committee to ascertain that this mailing that would go out on or before April 15 would likely be a postcard. This gives the actual notification that it's coming. And I think the language between the two items is clear. We're articulating that, on the back of the tax bill, due to volatility, the city is planning to do a property revaluation every two years. The current plan is that a reevaluation will occur each even-numbered year. There's no specificity to that, to the current tax bill. It's coming this year, it's coming next year. That's just a statement of procedure. By sending out that postcard indicating that the notice is coming this year, it's a phone number for questions, that's going to, like Alderman Gueva said, really eliminate the opportunity to miss it. I know a lot of folks missed the mailing from Vision when that came in with all the information that's really pertinent, that gets everybody a little hot under the collar. This is sort of a heads-up, it's coming. I see no issue with expanding our transparency, especially with a process that's new, slightly unusual compared to other municipalities throughout the state. So I'll be opposing the amendment here. I sponsored this as written, and I'd like to see it passed as written. Thank you.
Alderman Clemons.
Thank you, Madam President. I have to agree with my last two colleagues who spoke. I don't believe people are going to turn the bill around and look at it. And it is just a procedural thing. I think if it was an insert within the bill, that would be different. It's going to fall on the floor. Someone might pick it up and read it. I don't like spending any extra money, nor do my colleagues who spoke before me, all three of them. But I do think it's worthwhile. We did get a lot of complaints with people who said they didn't know it was happening, even though we had spoken about it prior and we had voted about, on it. And I agree with all of the citizens who spoke and said, I didn't know it was coming. We talked about it, we voted on it, and it became a dead issue. I think if they get this postcard in the mail, a lot of Aldermen will get a lot of calls, what's happening here? And then we can remind them. This was what's discussed, this is what happened, and so on. I think it's kind of a wake-up call to knock on their door and say, and tell them that it's coming. So unless it's an insert in the bill, I would be voting against it. I think a separate postcard, a separate piece of paper, I think this information is important enough that it should be separate from just the back of the bill. I think the back of the bill kind of feels like it's, we're hiding it. So I can't vote for this amendment. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. Obviously, I chaired this committee when we discussed this, and I had worked with Alderman Gueva in the initial beginnings of this legislation, and had encouraged him to see if we could get it on the tax bill to push down costs that might be incurred by sending out a mailer. I was actually really, I thought it was great that he was able to figure that out. It sounded like there were a lot of hoops to jump through in order to get it on the tax bill. But I just, my two concerns, and the reason why we put this legislation in is, I think, one, it's going to be a very tough budget season. The fiscal note of this could easily cover a community health worker that we just lost. And two, if we continue to notify, what, when, where does it end? Are we notifying the tax bill? And then we're notifying on this? And then now, all of a sudden, we're sending out 10 mailers? I think that we have a ton of opportunity to share things with our public. I think putting out a website is important. A title on the website would be really smart. I just don't support putting dollars in, especially where costs are going up, to be sending something citywide every two years.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to support the amendment. You know, we're sitting here in the budget meetings, nickel and diming everything. We're down to like, well, this is $1,000 here, and $1,500 here. So I mean, I don't think an extra postcard's going to make a difference. I'll notify everybody right now. 2026, you're going to get an assessment. I know everybody's watching, so. I just, I don't see the need for it, I guess. And every dime we can spend right now, to Alderman Kelly's point, we're trying to save a job somewhere, and yet we're adding money on to this. And I was thinking along the same lines, where does it end? Every time we, we're going to send out something for every announcement we could possibly have. So that was my thoughts on it.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Last year, I, there was a huge point of contention. People felt like they got sideswiped by this news. I could be wrong, but I could have sworn in early spring, we received something in the mail telling us an assessment was coming. And then the assessment came, and everybody was shocked that there was an assessment. They came to my house, I'm sure they came to everybody else. So I think the benefit of a secondary piece of information in the mail would be effective. And I might be in the minority. I didn't know there was anything on the back of my bill. So that might be just me. I don't think I've ever turned it over. So I think an additional piece of information would be helpful. So I will not be voting for the amendment.
You're not the only one who didn't know there was information on the back of the bill. I did sticker shock looking at the front of the bill. Anyone else? I had Alderman Jettie next, then Alderman Dowd.
So I just, you know, in response, I just wanted to point out, you know, respectfully to my colleague from Alderman One, the House Bill, excuse me, Senate Bill 225. The language does say, "Such notice shall be by individual notice to the property owner, by public notice in a local newspaper of general circulation, by public notice on the municipal municipality's main website, and any social media accounts utilized by the municipality, by public notice posted in two places where the municipality regularly posts notices of its governing body meetings, and by any other means deemed appropriate by the governing body." So it's not any one of those things, it's all of them.
Correct.
Okay? So it does provide such notice by individual notice to the property owner. So I'm looking at it right here.
Madam President, if I can.
Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. So I do have the text pulled up as well. It says, "All of the following ways, that wouldn't include a postcard mailed to you." That would be, "All the following ways, by providing notice to the property owner by public notice in a local newspaper of general circulation," and so on, so on. I don't read that as that would be a standalone piece of mail. If we were, then I would be saying, great, let's, we're going to have to do it anyway if it passes. So we're covered either way.
So could I just?
Alderman Jettie, yes.
Through you to Alderman Gueva. So this was amended. Did you, do you have the amended?
I do.
Copy? So, and the other thing I wanted to point out is that the notice that the original ordinance provides is not a notice as to what your new assessment is going to be. It's just a notice that we are doing a revaluation this year. This, the notice that would be sent out by April 15 is just saying, "We're doing a revaluation this year." You know, your assessment could go up, it could go down. And, you know, we don't know what the assessment's going to be. That would come later, you know, which is the notice that Senate Bill 225 provides for. It would provide the actual increase or decrease of your assessed value. What your property tax bill ends up being still won't be determined until it's determined by the Department of Revenue Administration, taking into consideration, you know, the state property tax, the county tax, et cetera. So just wanted to clarify that.
Anyone else? Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I appreciate the effort to tell people this, but I'm also of the opinion that, A, it's a lot of money, B, they'll probably take a look at it, throw it in the trash, or forget about it two days later. You know, I think there are other, less expensive ways to get the word out. And no matter what we do, even if we put up eight-foot billboards downtown, you know, people would miss it. But, you know, I think we do robo-calls. If you want to do robo-calls, that's a hell of a lot less expensive. Or we can just keep mentioning it here at our meetings, or, you know, I mean, there are other ways that the information get out there. It's not going to reach everybody. You can't reach everybody if you tattooed it on them. So, and even with putting this out, they're not going to realize, like at the tax bill, that, oop, that's what they meant. So based on all of the discussions we're having on the budget, I would prefer not to spend this kind of money on this. I think there are other less expensive ways to amount to the same thing.
Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I would never say no to saving money. Yeah, and I do, I do think there are other ways as well. But here, even if you are taking it out of your mailbox, walking it into your house, and you have it in your hands for two seconds, you can't say you didn't see it. If you didn't see it, that is on you. That's not, that's not on the city. That's not on any of us around this horseshoe. It was mailed directly to you, just like your tax bill's mailed to you. If you don't get that increased bill in your mail, or you don't see it, that's on you. The city has mailed it to you. It says it right on the back, actually. All about that, what happens if you don't get it, that you're still responsible for it. So at the end of the day, I do understand what you're saying. And I think we should, you know what? Why not do the cheaper things as well? I don't think you can have too much transparency on an issue like this. I think that we heard, and I know I definitely did, I'm not going to speak for my other colleagues around the chamber in their wards, but when this happened, it took a lot, it took a lot of people by shock. And this wasn't so much a younger generation of people who have mortgages, where this money goes in the escrows, and it's eventually just, your mortgage will go up a little bit. This was more the senior citizens in my ward, who show up at City Hall on the last day they can to pay their taxes with a check. This was the type of people that it was affecting more of what I saw. It wasn't so much people my age paying the mortgage. It was our older generation. And what does that older generation tend to look at more? It's not going to be social media. It will be stuff that's put directly in their mailbox. So I'm tailoring kind of to an age group that I think this would benefit the most. And they are still direct-mail people.
Alderman Clemons.
Thank you, Madam President. I have to agree 100% with what my colleague just said. We talk around this horseshoe, how we do as much as we possibly can for our seniors and so on. This is very specifically catered for those people who don't use social media, for those people who aren't going to turn the bill around. And I think the majority of us around here can all say, "We've never turned that bill around." We don't know that there was even any writing on it, let alone what it says. So I truly believe, and while I do agree with what my colleague to the right said to me about, you know, saving a person's job, I would do everything I possibly could to save someone's job. But at the same time, I also have to be responsible to the residents and to the comment of, "When does it end?" Never. We have people constantly moving into this city. We constantly have people coming and going and building and so on. So we have a new group of people. Maybe they're younger, maybe they're older, I don't know. But we have a constant change of address. I know in my ward alone, I'm turning around, seeing for sale signs up and seeing moving vans coming in constantly. So the answer to, "When does it end?" Never. It should continue, and I think we should be responsible to our taxpayers and let them know.
Alderman, sorry. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. Are you?
I'm good, yes.
Thank you, Madam President. So I said this at the committee, and I will repeat it tonight. I'm going to support the Goldenrod copy, because I think, I think we should try doing this first with the back of the tax bill and see, you know, if it achieves the goal that we want. And I committed to the sponsor of this bill that if we felt that this did not do the job, in other words, if there was still confusion after we passed this in this way, where it's on the back of the tax bill, then I committed to going with the postcard approach. But I think, I think we, I think we should try this first, because it's the less expensive approach, and we can do the other things, you know, on social media and putting it out here, and, you know, discussing it with neighbors and things like that, constituents. So I'm going to, you know, I'm going to go with the Goldenrod copy. And then again, I think, I think we keep it on our radar. And if we need to do the postcard route because people really don't see it, or there is still confusion about it, then at that point, then we can say, well, maybe it is worth the money. But I think we try this first.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I mean, it should end at some point, right? I mean, can we send a postcard to the people that park on the street in my neighborhood that are not supposed to, right? Because there's an ordinance for that, right? So maybe we should send a postcard to them, or any one of our other ordinances in that huge book that we have, right? We don't do that for everything. So there is an end. And why are we making this a senior issue now? So not to put Alderman Jettie on the spot, but through you to Alderman Jettie, if you don't use social media, Alderman Jettie, where do you get your information from?
The newspaper.
You don't have to answer that.
So my thing there is, is that's one of the items in the thing. So in the bill that he was talking about, right? Social media, newspaper in your area. Well, one group of people use social media, the other group of people use the newspaper. And that's, you know, I use the newspaper too, so maybe we're in the same age group. But, so we are taking care of the seniors, because they do use the newspaper. My dad still reads the newspaper. So we are taking care of both issues. So that's why I don't see the need to send out the extra postcard. Not at this time, and I agree with Alderman Clemmons. Maybe if we still have issues. But again, we could use that whole book and send out postcards for everything we do.
Further discussion on the motion to amend?
Roll call.
A roll call has been requested. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Timmons. Alderman Moran.
No.
Alderman Thibodeau. Alderman Gueva.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Six yays, nine nays.
Motion fails. Alderman Gueva. I'm sorry, Alderman Jettie.
There's one other thing I'd like to, I'd like to move to change the title. The last word in the title is revol- revol- revolations.
And we're going to notify people of that?
So, I'd like to amend that by changing revolations to revaluations.
Motion is to amend to change the wording, as you just heard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of O-25-046, as amended by my colleague in Ward 5. And I'd like to speak to that motion, if I can, briefly. Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate the, the conversation we just had around the chamber. It's kind of look forward to some budget deliberations if we're, if we're looking at, I hope we cut a lot more 20, the $50,000 decisions in the city as well. So, I think what we have in front of us is a good piece of legislation that will help the taxpayers of Nashua, that will keep people more informed. So, I ask for everybody to please join together and vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion is for final passage of O-2546, as amended by Alderman Jettie. By roll call. A roll call has been requested. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Tebow.
Yes, so, thank you, Madam President. I just, I just want to say this makes me look at the budget meetings a little bit differently now, too, because this will help the taxpayer, you know what will help the taxpayer? Another city worker in the health department. That will absolutely help the city, will help people that need it most. Getting this little postcard is not helping anyone, it really isn't. So, you know, when we're looking at the budget, and someone says, let's cut this, this $10,000 or this $5,000, I may be apt to think differently now, because it looks like, you know, we can send out postcards, we can do other things, we can use consulting fees, we can do things that maybe I wasn't for a couple of days ago. So, I want to help people in the city. This may help people, but a health worker would help people a lot more.
Alderman Senate.
Terribly sorry, but thank you, Madam President. Just to the last comment, I am actively looking for the funding for that community health worker. I've been in direct conversation with Director Bagley to determine the total line item cost to that, and actively looking for areas to redirect money in regard to consulting fees, because if anybody's been watching the Budget Committee, that's been my bread and butter lately. More of just a nuance or a fun anecdote, at this same committee where we considered this, this ordinance and this amendment, earlier we heard a presentation, and the question was asked, would, you know, on this project, would this require any sort of outside consultants to be brought in? And the answer was possibly to the tune of, potentially up to $25,000, which is the low end of this proposed mailing, and nobody really batted an eye at the moment. So, it's, I, I guess it's an idea of where we should all, where we think money is best spent. I think this is a valid use of city funding. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, the reason why I know we batted an eye is because nothing, no legislation was in front of us to do anything with. They were, it was just a discussion, like a presentation. So, I mean, maybe it's a different conversation if we had legislation to vote either way on it, that's all. But I'm just saying, people are going to need my vote to, whether or not to do that. So, you know, I'll be looking forward to those conversations, I think they'll be very robust.
The motion is for final passage, as amended, by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Gueva.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
Ten yays, five nays.
That motion carries, and ordinance 2546 is declared duly amended as, duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-25-144, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2 million for the Walnut Street Oval Intersection Project in West Pearl Street, streetscaping.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing and Budget Review Committee meeting on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-145, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1 million for signal coordination and implementation.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign it to Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing and Budget Review Committee meeting on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-146, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $500,000 for hydroelectric improvements.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Thursday, May 29, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-147, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $1 million for library building project design.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Lopez, and myself, Alderwoman Kelly. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Library Board of Trustees, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing and Budget Review Committee meeting on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-148, relative to the acceptance of 828,000 of grant funds for a Housing Champion Housing Production Municipal Grant from the New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs, and to deposit said funds into the city's housing revolving fund.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and allow for a second reading of R-25148.
Motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for a final passage of...
Oh, sorry, we haven't had the second reading, my bad.
Second reading of R-25-148, relative to the acceptance of 828,000 of grant funds for a Housing Champion Housing Production Municipal Grant from the New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs, and to deposit said funds into the city's housing revolving fund.
Alderman Lopez.
Now, if the incantation is correct, I would like to make a motion for final passage.
The motion is for final passage of Resolution 25148. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 120, Resolution 25148 is declared duly adopted.
First reading of R-25-149, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $600,000 for roof repair replacement at Police Department Headquarters.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Clemmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, Board of Police Commissioners, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Thursday, May 29, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-150, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $2 million for the Fire Department roof repair replacement at five locations in HVAC improvements.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Fire Commissioners, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Thursday, May 29, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-151, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $5,500,000 for the Public Works Division Garage Design.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Thursday, May 29, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-152, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $3 million for Holman Stadium improvements.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing and Budget Review Committee meeting on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-153, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $3,550,000 for fire in Street Department Capital Equipment Reserve Fund SURF purchases.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to Budget Review Committee, the Board of Fire Commissioners, Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Thursday, May 29, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-154, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into contracts with South Eagan Valley Transportation Collaborative, Nashua Community College, Riviera University, Town of Hudson, and Town of Merrimack for transit services.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Senate, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to Finance Committee.
First reading of R-25-155, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2025, relative to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Senate, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-25-156, authorizing the sale of tax-dated property located at 115-117 West Hollow Street.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gueva. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R-25-157, authorizing the mayor to apply for and expend the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, in Home Investment Partnership Program Funds for Fiscal Year 2026.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Senate, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-25-158, relative to a non-binding ballot referendum concerning the Keith Auditorium.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-25-055, amending the land use code by adding provisions regarding specific uses in the general industrial zone, where overlaying by the Transit Oriented Development Overlay District.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, Planning Board, and schedule an Aldemantic Planning and Economic Development Committee public hearing on Thursday, June 5, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber. Period for general public comment. We have one person signed up this evening, Bob Keating.
Good evening, my name is Bob Keating, from Five Coburn Woods, and speaking about two housing issues. The first, the Nashville Soup Kitchen and Shelter is warming station has closed for the, overflow space is closed for the, for the season, and next week, the city's warming station will close. And that will mean, you know, approximately 40 to 50 people will not have a place with a roof, you know, over them. And I know there had been discussion and looking toward next year, and I think in terms of next year, it starts as soon as we have more people out on the, you know, in our, in our streets and in our woods. So, I, I think the efforts to, to have, they're not ending homelessness, but more and more, more shelter and flexible spaces that allow for 24/7 use. So, really looking at it, harm reduction, saying we're not ending homelessness here, but we have opportunity to save people's lives and health, all that. So, the second I want to speak about is, is if people haven't seen it, to direct attention to, in my mind, the, the biggest change in terms of zoning that I've known in decades, and obviously, we're in the stages that next month, there will be the first draft of our zoning regulations change. And that's in Cambridge. And Cambridge in February, by a vote of eight to one on their city council, made it such that multiple family housing is available across all residential areas. So, there's really no distinction, well, there is some distinctions, but they can build up to a four-story units on any approved property without special permit and variance. They can build up to six if it has 20% of the units are affordable, you know, housing. It changes about the minimum requirements for lot zones, and that there's, it reduces, it eliminates the maximum number of units. So, it's very big, they estimate that will be about 10 times more housing that will be produced by that. Finally, in the last, the state of Massachusetts has released two reports, also in February, that goes along in the same line to produce more housing. They say that, you know, monumental issues require monumental responses. So, I hope that the Alderman Mayor takes a look at this as we move forward our own zoning about things that we need to do, about dramatic need for more housing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Remarks by members of the board, I'm going to start over here tonight.
We already heard from Energy and Environment Committee, but I just wanted to remind everybody the Sustainability Fair unfortunately will not be in attendance, because I have to travel for school break and my daughter's festival. But it is always an incredible afternoon. Hopefully, it'll be a little warmer than it has been in the last couple of years, but that is Saturday at the library.
Alderman Jettie.
So, thank you. So, this past Saturday, I celebrated my 80th birthday.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you. And I am completing my eighth year as Ward 5 Alderman. And I wanted to give anyone who might be interested in serving Ward 5 as Alderman ample time to consider it, as I will not be running for reelection, and the seat will be open. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have about serving as an Alderman, and I encourage everyone to give it serious consideration. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate all the folks who, from Nashua, who took time and effort that I can't even imagine to run the Boston Marathon yesterday. I couldn't possibly list them all, but a couple of names that I know off the top of my head are Nate Burns, Commissioner Matty Gregg. I know there were a host of others, several who performed very well in their respective divisions. To me, walking, running, skipping, hopping, even thinking about 26.2 miles is an endeavor in of itself, so congratulations to all of them. I hope to see them all back there next year. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So, this last week, we, we have been witness to some, some pretty crazy things. One in particular was, in Massachusetts, a couple was on their way to the dentist and were stopped presumably by ICE agents, who had, by the way, no, no warrant for these folks. And when they refused to get out of their car, kindly explaining to the ICE agents that they were calling their attorney, the, one of the agents busted through the window and pulled them out of the vehicle forcibly and arrested them. This is how our federal government is spending... This is how our federal government is spending your tax money. Now, while they're doing this, we are losing money for our SWAT teams, for our dive teams. We're losing money for things that keep us safe every single day, yet we're spending money on police officers busting in people's windows. And they're not police officers, they're ICE agents, okay? There's a, there's a, there's a big difference there. And I'll say that because in Tennessee, there was, there was an example of this where ICE, again, was terrorizing people in their neighborhood, and the neighborhood actually stood up and refused to let the agents onto the property or let them pull these folks out of the car like it happened in Massachusetts. And the local police came, and the local police did not get involved, and they didn't get involved rightfully so because the ICE agents, again, didn't have a warrant. This is important. We need to be speaking up. People have a right to be innocent until proven guilty, and the cops or anybody does, do not have a right to just take you without a warrant. So this is important stuff. This is what's been going on in our country, and it goes against everything in the Constitution, everything that makes America unique. And again, I have pledged that at every one of these meetings, I am going to be speaking up to one or more of the atrocities that continue to go on under the Trump administration, and I'm not going to stop until we get our country back. And what I, what I mean by we get our country back is we have our civil liberties intact. People shouldn't have to be afraid to walk down the street. It just shouldn't happen. If you're committing a crime, yes, the police should stop you, but if you're just walking down the street, no, you shouldn't be accosted by ICE. That's wrong. It's un-American. So I'm going to continue to keep speaking out on these issues, and I would encourage everyone to continue to do that because the only way that we can shed light on this stuff is by calling it out and, and bringing attention to it and calling it what it is, which is wrong. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I wanted to take a minute to welcome back to the chamber Alderman Cle. It's great to see you again and glad to have you back. Thanks.
Alderman Lopez.
I wanted to announce that I am also celebrating my 80th birthday. I'm 80, but I'm very optimistic. This Friday, I want to commend St. Louis for putting on a great Stations of the Cross. They've been doing this for years now, and it really makes an impact in the community. And I think it is a very important time for community to come together and feel like they're welcomed, like they're able to express themselves. So I wanted to commend them for doing that. I wanted to express my condolences to the family and friends of Herbert Lewis. He was very well-known in the tree streets. He was a rough rider. He was constantly volunteering and helping organize. He volunteered with POW, and he will be missed. In happier news, I wanted to announce that the January, that on June 14, we will be having the Tree Streets Block Party. So anybody who's interested in getting involved or volunteering, the week after next, we will resume our weekly meetings at Chicken and Chips at 6:00 p.m. So not this upcoming week, because I do get a vacation every now and then, but the week after, the first week of May, we'll be meeting at Chicken and Chips. Thank you.
Alderman Thibodeau.
I have kind of a, more of a question. Right before the meeting, I had a call from a constituent about the auxiliary school units being put back at Elm Street School. I was just curious. Name was him.
Alderman Dowd might be able to answer that.
I can answer that. Originally, they were slated to go to the landfill. When they got there, the DPW decided not to take them. So they had to go somewhere because, and they're temporarily at Elm Street on their trailers.
Okay.
And I believe Director Cummings is now going to try and find them a home. They're available for any use that, you know, there's, I've heard 15 different uses, but in good shape. We even have the classrooms that may dust them all, but they're available for any viable thing. But they won't be at Elm Street very long. One of the things that they've been volunteered to do is to be used as, as construction offices while they're doing the building at Elm Street, but we don't know if that's going to happen. And if there are any other good uses, see Director Cummings.
All set?
Yep.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to wish my daughter Violet a happy eighth birthday. She'll be turning eight years old this weekend. Thank you.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to concur with everything that my colleague from At Lodge, Ben Clemmons, said about the country. Thank you very much for speaking up. I also have one good notice, and that is with Matty Gregg. He ran the race in three hours, 46 minutes, and 59 seconds. He placed 17,585, placed out of 28,568. He did a great job. He placed out of, for male gender, 11,187, and then his age group, 45 to 49, he placed 1,867, placed out of 2,389. He raised $26,000 for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. So congratulations, Matty. You did a great job. I am very proud to say you're my friend and a colleague, and I just respect everything that you do. And again, thank you, Ben, for speaking up.
Alderman O'Brien, you all set?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, I would, I would like to congratulate my coworker, Lee Riley, for running and finishing the Boston Marathon. Committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
Joint Special School Building Committee, Thursday at 7:00 p.m., Nashua High North.
Alderman Moran.
You just heard it, but on Thursday, June 5, will be the next PDC meeting. We're pushing out the May meeting to the June 5 meeting to make room for budget. But on top of the, the legislation you just heard about and the public hearing, we'll also have a continued discussion on the re-zoning that Manager Durfee is bringing forth in presentation. So it was a riveting conversation at the last PDC meeting, and I, there's a lot more to discuss. So I encourage everyone to come and listen. It'll, it sounds like it's going to be a long meeting, again.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Graham, if you can help me out, tomorrow night, we have infrastructure, correct?
That is correct.
Yes, so it'll be at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow is the Culture Connection Committee meeting, 12 to 1:00. It's upstairs in the auditorium.
Alderman O'Brien. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Thibodeau.
I forgot, for everybody in Ward 6, tomorrow is the Ward 6 meeting with the mayor at 6:00 o'clock at Fairgrounds Middle School.
Now, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the April 22, 2025, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned at 9:29 p.m. Thank you very much, everyone.